Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pictionary, would you please call roll?
Mr. Christensen. Mrs. Weiss.
Here.
Mrs. Hedley.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Here.
Mrs. Janisak.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Scouso.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Mojek.
Here.
A present, one not.
Thank you, sir. Motion to attempt to adopt the agenda for business items.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Scouso. Business items adoption moved by Mr. Scouso, second by Mrs. Hedley. Mrs. Hoppy, sorry. Mr. Pictionary.
Voting is open. Mrs. Hoppy, just wanted to put it in. Yes, okay. Motion passes.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes. Everyone had attendance, look at them. All right, and if anybody willing to move them.
So moved.
Moved Mr. Scouso, second by Mrs. Walsh Turner. Mr. Pictionary.
Vote is open. Motion passes.
Thank you. We just had the announcement of executive sessions on January 21st, 2025. That's correct. I don't know how I missed that last week. No, we did have it. At this time, we have student government reports. I see he's there. Ah, he needs a mic.
Hello. So SGA is preparing for Wish Week, which will be held for, um, which will be held a two-week-long event in which students and staff can request gifts for each other during the, during the first week, which will start off with a spirit assembly this Friday. SGA will then grant those wishes over the course of the second week, um, which could range anywhere from a special birthday celebration to students getting a jar of pickles. The, uh, week at that, Wish Week, uh, yeah, sorry, the week that wishes are granted will also include spirit, um, spirit days for the students and staff. We will host a spirit assembly that will be on Friday, the 7th, where the, where we will have games and other activities to generate lots of school spirit in preparation for the big week. A Miracle Minute will also be, will also take place during the assembly to help secure donations for some of the charities events going on in this high school. Our community service committee is all, is planning on making the Valentine's Day a special for some of the elderly in our community by hand-making special cards to be given out to the residents at a local retirement home.
Okay, thank you, Caleb. Seen anybody for PTO? No?
It's up there. I don't know.
Not seen anybody?
Their report is, uh, is listed in the board docs agenda for, uh, for all of our, most of our PTOs and PTAs. Uh, it is, I thought, an interesting note, by the way, that your building PTO is actually having some organizational meetings and getting things moving already, uh, so that when, so, you know, August of 2026 comes, they're fully functioning and robust organization. So kudos to that group and all the PTOs for all the service that they provide our Stables students.
Thank you, Dr. Wall. Solicitor report, sir?
So there is no solicitor report for tonight. Uh, there were several legal issues that needed to be addressed during executive session, uh, but they were simply for the board at that time. So I have nothing to present.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any committee reports from our board members? Yes, Mrs. Janisak?
Um, I would want to announce so the public's aware from PSBA, which is Pennsylvania School Boards Association, um, at PSBAtrust.org. They are announcing four scholarships that are available to students who attend a PSBA member district. Our district is such a district. There are four scholarships. They are one-time scholarships of up to 2,500 or 5,000, depending on the scholarship. Um, and one of them is for a student planning to pursue a bachelor's degree in education. One is for a student planning to pursue a bachelor's degree in public safety, criminology, forensics, or other law enforcement or safety majors. One is for a student who has served as a student representative to their local school board during their high school academic career. And one is for a student planning to pursue a bachelor's degree in the arts. So again, that is PSBAtrust.org. I do not know if these are in Aviance, or if anybody knows to put them in Aviance, but they're available for students in our district. I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that. The deadline is March 14th for those scholarships, which is a great opportunity. It is statewide, obviously, so any, you're competing against students in any other district who is also in the Pennsylvania School Boards Association.
Any scholarships, if you forward any information, we will post that in Aviance, um, for high school students to access anytime.
I will do that right now. Thank you so much, Mr. Filani.
Thank you, Mrs. Janisak. Anybody else? All righty, superintendent's report, sir?
Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I want to start first with, um, recognition. January is, of course, School Directors' Recognition Month. It's a time to honor both our Board of School Directors and their dedication to excellence across the Commonwealth. More than 85% of all Pennsylvania students attend public schools, including the over 4,000 students in Bethel Park. Along with district administration, the nine members of each local school board make complex decisions to guide public schools and provide an educational environment where every student can find a path to success. School directors are vital component of our public education system, working tirelessly to ensure all students have access to a quality education. They volunteer their time and effort to the challenging and complex responsibilities of board business, such as voting on budgets, adopting policy, conducting comprehensive planning, not to mention answering emails. Their dedication and passion for the communities is truly inspiring. An additional measure of commitment, our board has also taken the step of adopting the PSBA Principles for Governance and Leadership. This framework of actionable steps is designed to increase the effectiveness of our board. Research shows that school board actions can have a direct impact on student achievement. So in celebration of these nine public servants, I would like to recognize our School Board of Directors and present them each with a certificate of appreciation. Anyway, thank you, uh, school board. Enjoy your month. Next, uh, I want to recognize, as we do, uh, once a month, all of those retirees who want to make the four, uh, for retirement. And tonight you have Maria Quinn. Maria started in the district in September of 1999 as a noontime aide at Lincoln Elementary. She also subbed in the district as a secretary, an instructional aide, and a health room aide. In September of 2005, she became a procurement specialist until July of 20, 2009, when her assignment changed to the secretary for the Director of Transportation. She held this position until July of 23, when she became the supervisor of transportation, and she will retire from this position in June. I'm going to wish her a long and happy retirement. Uh, I have a brief strategic plan update. Dr. Korsinski, can you flip the timer for me, please? For this month's strategic plan report, I'd like to, uh, give you the progress on curriculum instruction goals. First, we had another curriculum mapping day at the secondary level, uh, we'll work in Atlas. At the elementary level, our focus continues to be on CKLA. I'm very grateful for the efforts of our administrators, teachers, and our coach, who are, who is and are taking this curriculum work most seriously and producing great work. We continue to refine our tiered intervention system of support, uh, the district-wide intervention framework. We want to have every teacher see themselves as an interventionist. So it's our goal to have these tiers or these leveled systems of interventions for students who are showing signs of academic struggle. And based on evidence, each tier becomes more involved, more systematic, and more teacher-centered of direction. We continue to build a culture of data-based decision-making. We're maintaining our data warehouse, our benchmark assessment system, and our quarterly data reviews with all teachers and administrators. Ultimately, we desire a culture, culture of responsive planning, where teachers use their data to make, uh, pardon me, and other measurable outcomes to make instructional decisions. Plus, we're continuing the goal-setting experience in K-8. We continue to provide effective professional development and programs to support middle school math. Think it was a good indicator that our winter math scores showed growth in every grade in mathematics. We're transitioning to the full implementation of the PA Steels standards this year. Uh, this is a major shift. The new standards prioritize student productivity, participating in scientific discourse and practices, and sustained investigation to support deeper understanding and sophisticated reasoning. In her new position, Mrs. Kramer is focusing on her efforts on the BPOA Cyber Academy, uh, and that paying particular attention to the cyber culture. So we have, uh, developing meaningful, caring, respectful relationships between students and among staff. Uh, we want to support the unique learning needs of the students in the cyber program, engage in proactive communication, and develop support systems for student transition. We remain committed to customized, high-quality, useful staff development programs and services for all employee classifications. In addition, we're seeing success, great success with the instructional coach model that we've, we've put forward this year, uh, who is customizing, individualizing staff growth. So to sum up, we are seeing great changes in Bethel Park. We are updating or outright changing the cornerstones and keystones of our curriculum. Each one will make a significant difference in the current and future educational experiences in Bethel Park. But these shifts take time to accomplish and takes even more time for it to produce the long-term, sustained academic growth we're seeking to become best-in-class. I'll close by extending my appreciation for your support, your commitment, and your patience, and the same from our faculty administrators for doing this heavy lifting. Time. It can be done. Which, which means, Mr. Crummy. Five big things?
Five big things, another five minutes. There we go. Three minutes, you got it. Here we go. Start the clock. Due to recent weather-related disruptions in Tuesday and tomorrow, the second night of marking period of IMS and McQuaid Ice will be extended by one day. This initiative will allow students and teachers extra time to complete tests, assignments, and projects. The third academic quarter will begin on Tuesday, January 28th. There will be no classes on Monday, January 27th, as that is Records Day. This change does not impact students in grades K through six.
Jim, that's a change. Lisa, Mrs. Miracle sent out an email. It will affect grades five and six.
Oh, okay, well, that's news to me. Okay, very good.
It went out late this afternoon.
It does not, yes.
I think that, that last sentence is, you're, thank you for catching that. It's, I think all the principals have opted to bump one more day for, for the first.
Okay, okay, good to know. All right, very good. So, uh, it, it impacts everyone, so as I said. Fourth graders at Benjamin Franklin Elementary School recently participated in the Smithsonian Physical Science Unit with an egg drop challenge exploring how to protect the brain in collisions. Uh, the students designed model bicycle helmets to protect eggs from cracking when dropped, encouraging creativity, teamwork, and critical thinking. The project taught students about motion energy, engineering principles, and safety through a hands-on, engaging activity. Bethel Park High School is collecting submissions for its Salute to Service Wall of Valor, honoring alumni who have served or are serving in the United States Armed Forces. The submissions are due by February 1st, and, uh, through a Google form found on our website, the updated wall will be unveiled around Memorial Day, reflecting Bethel Park's commitment to recognizing its veterans. Next Friday, January 31st, Bethel Park High School will host its own polar plunge, the Special Olympics Polar Bear One Mobile Unit, which will be located right in front of the school. Organized by the Best Buddies Club, the event aims to raise $10,000 for Special Olympics Pennsylvania. There are already over six. Uh, high school students and staff can participate by raising funds. Those who raise at least $40 will have the opportunity to take the plunge and receive an official polar plunge T-shirt. And, uh, I told Mrs. Hernandez, I would make my pitch tonight. Any board member that wants to participate in the polar plunge is more than welcome. Would love to have you.
Challenge all my colleagues. Uh, Mrs. Hernandez grabbed me yesterday, and I committed to coming on Friday. So for the rest of the seven of us, haven't picked that yet, but you, I'll accommodate any times. I'm always available.
Is it nine to one or something?
The timeframe is here, I have it on the email.
It is 9:00 AM to 1:00 o'clock. We also have an accommodation, uh, that is a sit tank with a dump water. If nobody, if somebody can't jump for reasons, there's other ways to participate. So 9:00 AM to 1:00. We encourage everybody to decide.
I'll come and serve.
Hey, don't forget about the theme. The theme is Disney.
Yes, you're jumping.
The theme is Disney.
Yeah, I got to now.
The theme is Disney.
Five bucks for the $40, that works out. There's eight of us and you jumping, so.
That's our board representation.
I'll, I'll come and I'll pay money, and then anybody who would like to jump in is more than welcome to jump in there, but I will see you that morning.
To raise, to raise the bar, Black Hawk School District just did this. They raised $36,000.
I was going to say, I'll do it, because I read that on their website the other day.
All right, so we got two of us jumping.
It'd be great. It'd be great.
Joe, get the money from, you know.
Cause I know, I know he's on the clock.
And remember, the theme, the theme is Disney, and, uh, Mr. Pictionary has promised to go as Moana, so we're.
Oh, no, you wait till see what.
Okay.
It's better than Moana, I'll tell you that right now.
Very good.
Mr. Mojek, do you need the tiaras that I have in my basement? Do I have to go downstairs?
You would have to pay more to do that. You get a hundred dollars.
We will have news media coverage and hopefully live recording of the whole event.
A hundred dollars.
BPTV as well, so.
I like Mrs. Hernandez, so if you get a hundred dollars.
It'll be a wonderful event.
Okay, talk to that side of the administration over there, and I, I do have the tiara and the wand. I know it's in a box marked Disney outfits.
I think we should just do 9:00 AM. 9:00 AM, if you're meeting up, all right, 9:00 AM on Friday.
All right, we're good. We got three.
So we have three? Okay, that's good. That's good.
Sorry, number five.
Last one. Uh, uh, BPHS will stage The Sound of Music, March 12th through the 15th, 2025, directed by Mr. Todd Casalwa and Ms. Julia Daven, with a team of experienced directors handling music choreography, costumes, and stage crew. As everyone knows, this is the 60th anniversary of The Sound of Music, and we're going to produce it in style. It is, everyone knows the story. It's set in 1938, Salzburg, Austria, and the story follows Maria, a governess who falls in love with a von Trapp kids and, and eventually their father, and helps them escape from the Nazis. Tickets will go on sale on March 1st. So those are the five big things.
Oh, I wanted, could I say, in a twist of fate, right, and the irony, the, uh, stage director for Sound of Music is Mr. Christopher Plummer, who, who was also the original actor, and it's just the funniest thing, and he's a wonderful guy. So I just wanted to say how funny that was.
Yeah, when I put that in there, that was very confusing for people. People thought he was making a, I was like, a different one. So, yeah, it's great. It's great, and, uh, one of the directors is Julie Andrews. No, just kidding.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crummy, for your five big things. And, uh, the last piece, uh, is our bright spots from the curriculum department.
Go ahead, Mark. You can start it. Uh, I wanted to take the opportunity to just share with everyone some of the things that are happening on the inside of the building. We're all seeing significant progress on the physical structure of the building, but a lot of things are happening behind the scenes to prepare the spaces for the students and staff. I had the opportunity to attend the EdSpaces Conference with Dr. Walsh in Texas in November. It is the gathering of all, of all furniture vendors in one place. Uh, a truly unique experience, very overwhelming experience, but very informative experience. We were able to go to professional development sessions. We were able to talk with other school districts about what they're doing, some of the spaces that they're designing. Um, they let you do anything you want with the furniture. You can move it around, you can sit on it. Uh, we did a lot of that. Uh, immersive tours, you can see there, uh, me wearing the virtual reality goggles. That is something that most furniture vendors will allow. When you select the furniture, they put it in the, they, you give them the renderings of the building, they put it in so that you can see what it will look like in the space. Uh, very, very fascinating technology. Great networking. Uh, there were some other districts there from the region, um, but there were a lot of people from all over the United States. Um, the exhibit hall was quite a sight to see. Um, that's just a small fraction of it. You had over 200 vendors present at EdSpaces. And so we had two days to just try to get from one end of the, of the floor to the other end of the floor. In the corner, you can see from Draw Collective, Kayla Benton is our interior designer, and she was a fantastic tour guide for us. Uh, walked with us, um, just kind of pointing out vendors that she has worked with, that she has liked. Um, but she was a valuable asset because it, it really was a lot to take in. What we're working on right now are furnishing the spaces within the elementary center. Um, so very quickly, I just wanted to show you some of the, the spaces that the center will have, um, that I think are very, very special and unique to Bethel Park. Uh, the first of which is a stream lab. We will have two of these spaces. Um, one will be dedicated to our primary learners. There will be opportunities here for them to really start to learn the basics of cutting, gluing, learning about different materials, not just low-tech things like craft supplies and cardboard, um, but also starting to do some coding, um, some block coding and binary coding, just to kind of get some experience. Um, they will also have opportunities to do prototyping, where they get to make inventions and try and go through that engineering design process. The second stream lab will be on the main floor, and this is for students in grades three to five. And you're going to see a little bit more sophistication in their prototyping. You're going to see a mixture of high-tech and low-tech things. We will have a laser engraver in that space, a vinyl cutter, 3D printers. Um, it's going to be a great opportunity for the students to take all of those, um, the media and materials that they were using downstairs and be able to fluently apply them, um, as they move up in grade levels. Both labs will also, um, the PA Steels are a pretty heavy, heavy lift, as Dr. Walsh has mentioned. So the stream courses will be in the Unified Arts Rotation. So every student in K to five will have the opportunity to participate in the stream class, and they will be responsible for teaching the technology and engineering portion of the Steel Standards and also the environmental sustainability standards. Uh, the classrooms, there are, of course, lots of classrooms, and how a classroom is designed is drastically impacts the kind of learning that happens in that classroom. So there's a lot of decisions to be made about the types of desks we'll use. If there's small group instruction occurring, a small group table. Also, things like the teacher's desk will also all need to be thoughtfully selected. Uh, spaces that we're really, really excited about are called the commons. And so in each, um, wing, you have neighborhoods of schools, uh, neighborhoods of classrooms, which is four classrooms together. And as you can see on the bottom there, this was a picture, um, Erman Crest in Seneca Valley has a similar setup. And in the common area, you have, there are not sinks in the classrooms. They were purposely put in the center of the commons so that the students can come out and engage in collaborative activities. It could be for reading, it can be for math, it can be for science. But ultimately, you want to select furniture that can be easily stored, um, but also can be used in multiple ways. You want it to look tidy, right, Dr. Korsinski, as you're walking through the spaces, but you want to make sure that you have enough seating for about 50 students in each commons area. So we're really, really excited about these spaces. Uh, the libraries are, um, you'll have your traditional book stacks as you, you always have, but you also have some unique features to the libraries, one of which are, there are two separate libraries. So downstairs, we have a primary library. That includes all of your spaces for shelving. You have a full classroom setup if a librarian would want to do a lesson that involve direct instruction. There's also an area for the librarian to do a read aloud. Um, a lot of opportunities for flexible seating for the students to just get comfortable and read. The upstairs library, which is on the top floor, will have, it is aimed for students in three to five. It is a massive space. Within that space, you have all of our book collections. You also have three classrooms that can be used by the librarians, also by the teachers, if they would like to bring their class. There is also an additional steam space in that library. Um, so as students are becoming more fluent in different medias and materials in the stream spaces, and the teachers would like to bring them up to the, the steam space in the library, that space will always be there so that that can extend the learning from the regular classroom. Um, and you'll see some opportunities for, for flexible seating. There may be some soft seating like couches, cafe tables. It will be just a really nice place for the students to be able to read, to do research, um, and to even to socialize. Very, very excited for that space. There is also a rooftop garden off of that space. Um, the outdoor classroom, we will be doing a separate bright spot, Mrs. Janisak, because this is a very, very special space to us. But between the two, um, the two wings of the grade levels, there is a space that is in the center and protected for the students and would be able to be accessed by the public. Um, but there's going to be amazing opportunities for learning outside, things like flexible seating like the inside, exploration of nature, um, just plain tinkering. Um, so we're really, really excited for how this space is evolving. This is how we felt after EdSpaces. Um, that they were, when you apply and we got scholarships, you have to tell them what your budget is for the project. So we went in with a, like a, a target on us. Um, so a lot of people coming after us, wanting our attention, wanting to try to get our business. And at that point, we learned about furniture broker companies, companies that help you with this process. So we investigated four different companies for this process, and we selected a company called K-12 to help us with the selection of furniture. They will also manage all of the purchasing of the furniture for us. They're 100% open source. That means they are vendor-agnostic. They do not have loyalties to any one particular brand. Um, they're going to work with us on the FFNE portion of the design work, furniture fixtures, equipment. They will specifically work on the furniture with us. Um, they will be in total coordination with both us, the district, and Draw's design team as well. And they will do project management through post-installation. They'll keep a robust inventory of what was purchased in each space so that if we ever need anything reordered or replaced, it's all in one place for us. Um, some of the other things that they'll do with us, they'll be facilitating surveys, interviews, and focus groups, um, department meetings as well, to just get some feedback from, from people on what they'd like to see in the space. Um, something we're very excited about is their, their cost-efficient product recommendations. I was able to show them what we liked at EdSpaces. They're able to go back through several different vendors and find the best price on that particular piece of furniture. They'll also do those 3D renderings of us, of our selections, so as we design those spaces, we'll be able to see those in three dimension. Um, they'll let us pilot spaces. They'll be giving us furniture to put in the schools for the teachers to sample. Uh, we can request any product sample that we want from any manufacturer that we want. We've already started to see this in working with them. They've been a great partner, experienced expert support, expert support on purchasing logistics. great partner. Experienced expert support on purchasing, logistics, installation warranties. They really do help lighten the load for both the facilities end and the curriculum end. And they are willing to... They do provide professional development. It's... You don't just open a new space and people just know how to use it. There will be professional development for the teachers to learn how to navigate those spaces. Just some things coming up with K-12 and us and our partnership. This weekend, they'll be coming in, starting Sunday, before we begin even looking to purchase furniture, and we need to know what we have. So they'll complete a full audit of all of the elementary schools and NAMS, and give us a detailed report of what is in each building, and also a rating of each item, of piece of furniture. They will be meeting the staff virtually in one meeting for kindergarten through fourth, another meeting for NAMS that will be on the 29th. Also, on the 29th, we will all be gathering together the school district, Draw, and the K-12 team. That'll be the first meeting with all partners at the table. They'll be spending some time with the principals on February 3rd, and then they'll begin meeting with the individual department facilitators on the 4th. So we are very, very, very excited. This project has been... I just want to thank all the people that have been involved, from the school board, to the teachers, to the administrators, Draw Collective, now K-12, the Children's Museum, Pittsburgh Botanic Gardens, Industrial Arts Workshop. This has truly been a project that is collaborative and inspiring, and we are incredibly grateful to have the best of vendors and providers and creative minds to help us design these spaces.
Yeah, that was about three hour glasses ago. That's okay. So thank you for the updates. And just to confirm, I know that you had asked, Mrs. Janicek asked last month to bring up the outdoor classroom project, which we'll do for a future meeting here in this, maybe the next month or so. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Any public comments at this time, since we are one member of the public? It makes it easier. Now we move on to business items. We have a consent agenda. Mrs. Healy, could you read the 20 items that we're going to vote on, just as a reminder to everybody?
Sure. I'll put my glasses on.
Sorry.
That's okay. Number one, school-sponsored overnight educational activities. Two, high school course selection guide, appointment of personnel, change of assignments, approval of professional tuition reimbursement, approval of change of order, PCCO ECs double zero three for the new K-5 elementary school project. Seven, December 2024 and January 2025 salaries and bills. Eight, November 2024 financial report. Nine, December 2024 financial report. Ten, budgetary transfers. Eleven, payment for the new K-5 elementary school project. Twelve, payment for the Independence Middle School, Phase III renovations. Thirteen, acceptance of Jefferson Regional Foundation grant. Fourteen, approval of donation. Fifteen, approval of the purchase of surveillance and guest management systems. Sixteen, payment for Independence Middle School, Phase II renovations. Seventeen, revision to policy. Let's see which one. That's... Discipline of students with disabilities, behavioral support, eligibility of non-resident students, and bullying and cyberbullying. For the final reading, eighteen, revision of policy, third and final reading, and that is for educational opportunities for military children. Nineteen, student agreements. Twenty, 2024, 2025 health and safety plan. Twenty-one, approval of consent agenda.
Second. So moved in second. Moved by Mrs. Healy, second by Mr. Scalzo.
Voting's open.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mrs. Healy.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Scalzo, curriculum committee, please.
Okay. Number one, K-4 report card to make subsection changes to ELA section of the K-4 report card to align with the CKLA program, no cost. Grade five, English Language Arts Report Card, to combine two report card grades, language arts, and reading into one grade called ILA for grade five, based on the new CKLA program outcomes, no cost. High School Business Computers and Consumer Science, to approve, to add honors, waiting for accounting one and two to be more in line with the rigor of the course and the direction the district is taking towards CHS, no cost. High School English, to add CHS, waiting for the public speaking course for Robert Morris University credit, no cost. Five, High School Special Education, to create two new CHS-weighted courses, Foundation of Special Education and Foundation of Educational Practice, to earn Carlo University credit for future teachers. Note, costs of the curriculum writing will be paid by the PDE grant to increase the teacher pipeline. High School Social Studies, to add CHS-weighted credits to AP Psychology, Honors, Philosophy, and Sociology, all of three of which will earn Carlo University credits, no cost. Seven, High School World Language, to add CHS designations to the Level Four and Five language classes in French, German, Latin, and Spanish, to earn Carlo University or Washington and Jefferson College credits, no cost. And eight, school-sponsored overnight educational activities, which is the Pennsylvania FCCLA Annual State Leadership Conference, Seven Springs, PA, March 31st, 2025, to April 2nd, 2025. I would like to move items one through eight.
I'll second it, but I have a question.
Moved in second.
Mr. Valani, are numbers three through seven included in the current High School Course Curriculum Guide? And do we anticipate these replacing anything that was not taken out?
So currently, three through six are all represented in the course selection guide as written. World Language, we're just working through the approvals of the teachers for those classes. If and when approved, with the teacher recommendations, those who sign up for the Level Four classes would just be switched into the CHS version. The class would be approved based on the requirements. They already currently exist, so the course would not change. They would just make sure they meet the CHS requirements. The kids would get the added weight. It's their choice for that class at the time. So the honors class would become a CHS class. All other ones have been adjusted and changed in the course selection guide.
So would that make the Level Four, the fourth-year course, removed from the course selection guide and replaced by the CHS?
Yes, so...
Or are we going to combine the regular and the CHS? But that doesn't work for CHS, correct?
So we have currently regular four and then honors in the World Language track program. So regular would still exist in its same. The honors weight slash CHS would become that course. It's a Level One World Language course that they align the curriculum to already. It's just the teacher approval. And then the five AP would be a college Level Two course. So there'd be two separate CHSs for four, five, and that already aligned with the AP credit course.
Okay, and just for clarification, they will get the credit, no matter if they choose to go to Carlo, choose to go to Robert Morris, choose to go to any other school that we're offering CHS for. So if they choose to go out of state, those courses will go with them. Just for clarification for parents.
Correct. So they will get the weighted QPA, whether they sign up for the college credit or not, at Bethel Park High School. And then if they take the Carlo CHS credit and they get a grade of a B or higher, they will get the weighted course, whether it goes to Carlo or they transfer that, like any other CHS, to any other university.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Valani, if you don't mind, we have three colleges listed here tonight, I believe, with Robert Morris, Carlo, and Washington-Jefferson. Thank you, Vince. How is that determined? From what college that we choose from?
So in Act 51, Pennsylvania passed a law with CHS and grade point quality average that every high school should have some kind of offering of CHS. When we reviewed our local partners, it was in our interest. Some of the bigger schools have not jumped on CHS, where a lot of the local, smaller, or private schools have started these programs. One, it's a great recruiting mechanism if students want to stay close to home. So a lot of our CHS partnerships first have to be in the state of Pennsylvania. So... And then when we looked at the proximity and the offerings, these schools had great programs. Robert Morris has a lot in the engineering. They have the business school, the marketing that was very appealing to us. Carlo, being a private school, and their college and high school program, acceptance teachers with masters, degrees, or years teaching, was very appealing with some of their in-state criteria. We still have some with Pitt. We have an affiliation tie-in with CMU with one of our computer programming courses that the curriculum's on. And then Washington and Jefferson was put on there. So Carlo, with the World Language Exploration, why there's two there, is Carlo has, offers those programs in person. They still have the German in their criteria, in their curriculum, I should say, but they don't teach it in person anymore. So they would still honor the course, but it would transfer to another university. If for some reason we couldn't, that's why we put the Washington and Jefferson on there for the German program specifically.
Okay, thank you. All right, motion has been passed in second. Mr. Pussoneri for a vote.
Voting's open.
Thank you, sir.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor, Personnel, please.
Okay, Dr. Korzinski, no need to flip it. So there are five items here tonight. Number one, approval of extra duty responsibility program. Number two, acceptance of resignations. Number three, appointment of personnel. Number four, approval of job descriptions. And number five, approval of unpaid legal absence.
Second.
Moved by Mr. McGregor, second by Mr. Scalzo. Any conversation, discussion? No? At the time, Mr. Pussoneri, if you don't mind?
Voting's open. Motion passes.
Thank you. Mrs. Walsh-Turner, Finance, please.
Yeah, number one is payment for new K-5 elementary school invoice for ECS Mid-Atlantic in the amount of $5,711.96. Invoice for ECS Mid-Atlantic in the amount of $18,785.28. And project and invoice to Herbert Rollings and Gerbic Inc. in the amount of $1,186. Approval of Alternate Transportation Service Agreement with First Student, pending final review of the solicitor. Approval of bus usage. The school, Board of School Directors approves administration recommendation to approve the use of two school district buses and our drivers' time to run shuttle service for the July 26 Arts and Music Festival along Park Avenue benefiting the Fantastic Four. And for those who don't remember, the Fantastic Four is the Bethel Park Education Foundation, the Bethel Park Community Foundation, the Bethel Park Historical Society, and the Bethel Park Public Library. And finally, number four, the approval of Student Information System contract, a five-year contract with Focus School Software as our new student information system, beginning January 31st, 2025, subject to finalization and solicitor review. I move one through four, unless anybody has questions.
Yeah, we're going to ask Chris to kind of walk the board through the search process to identify that student information system and maybe some of the highlights.
Yeah, thank you. A committee was formed a couple weeks back, and we had selected a handful of vendors to view demonstrations with. It was a two-step process. We, the first round of demonstrations, we kind of narrowed that down to the top three that we felt were the best for the district. Excuse me. The committee met on three separate occasions. We viewed demonstrations from different vendors. And then we had a final wrap-up meeting where we kind of discussed and went through the thoughts and evaluation process. I'd put together a matrix for everyone, kind of scoring different target areas that are beneficial in this type of software, some of the highlights and key points. A lot of discussion went back and forth. We have reached out, myself, as well as my fellow colleagues, have reached out to other schools that use the vendors that we kind of demonstrated. And we came to a consensus on Focus, based on a number of things. I think vastly, what stuck out with them as opposed to others was their ability to adapt and customize their software to Bethel Park. We have a lot of moving parts that are going in and out, and we're looking at this as a phased approach. So we're starting with the CIS, and then we have different avenues that we can take in the future with special services, health modules, transportation modules, payment modules, lunch fee modules, those types of things.
Yes. Go ahead.
I do have a question regarding approval of transportation. Is this going to be our second transportation agreement?
Second vendor.
Second vendor.
Yes. We have some smaller...
And this one, it doesn't tell me what routes we're running on this. So are they running Bethel Park routes? Are they running outside of Bethel Park?
They could be combined. They could be individual, Bethel Park, or they could be shared because of the definition of first alt is it's an alternate route. So we may be combined with another school district.
Mrs. Janicek?
Thank you. I wanted to ask, just so that families understand, because I think a lot of people don't really know what CIS entails. Like, that's not Parents Square. Is it the gradebook? Is it the registration? Like, what things would a family see as shifting to the new platform? Or maybe nothing yet?
Yes. So a lot of the platforms, as you mentioned, some of them will stick around, like Parents Square, Naviance. Again, looking at that phased approach, we have the option to kind of consolidating a few of those in the future. But the CIS overall is, that encompasses the, all of the demographic data and educational data for each and every student. So when they log into the system, your child's schedule, your child's report card, different types of, you know, artifacts as far as notes, educational artifacts, all of those encompass the CIS. The window is rather short. That's why I wanted to get it on the agenda this month for approval, so we can get the process rolling. The plan is to finish out the school year with eSchool, our current system, while in the background, we'll be standing up the new system, getting it ready for summer implementation. And just like everything else, we'll have, you know, we'll be in contact with the parents and the community. Several communications will be going out, kind of updating them throughout this whole process.
Thank you. So most likely, in the fall, it wouldn't be eSchools Plus where we're logging in.
Yeah, the plan is to start the 25, 26 school year with the new system.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Boylan, I got a little insight of your process, but if you just to share, not necessarily the individual peoples, but your committee was composed by, you know, someone from this area, from administrators, you know?
Right. So we had almost around 20 people on the committee. I wanted to compose that of, you know, everyone that kind of has their hand in the system. So we had school nurse, school counselors, dean of students, principals, secretaries, teachers, administrators, special education folks, IT staff, everyone that kind of uses the system day-to-day, because this shouldn't be just essentially one person's, you know, decision. This is a large system that everyone uses in their day-to-day routine. So I wanted to have input from all those folks.
And thank you. That's my understanding. I wanted to make sure everyone was clear about that. And my honest understanding is one of our neighbor in the school district has been using this, so we at least got a good reference point of the success of the program, since this district has been using it.
Absolutely. Upper St. Clair. Upper St. Clair has been using Focus for quite a few years. I have met with some of their administrative staff, as well as their state reporting folks, and I know a lot of the other folks on the committee, they've reached out as well, and we have gotten good feedback. And they're opening their doors, you know, during the process for any assistance that we need. So, that's awesome.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? All right. So, we've moved. Do we have a second? May I have a second?
Second.
Leave a second. Mr. Janisak. Mr. Pishaneri?
Voting's open. Motion passes.
Thank you. Mrs. Harper, we have policy committee, please.
Yes. Mr. Modrick, we have three items. These are readings, so there's not anything to vote on in this section tonight. So, the number one is revision to policies. There are two. The first is 707, use of facilities, and that is a revised policy. 805.2 is school security personnel. This one is kind of in response to a law that was recently passed in the state that every school district must hire at least one security guard or security personnel for their district. So, this is, we are blessed that we've already done that, and we have more than one. Let's see. And then number two, the approval of policy 702.3, memorials. This is the second of three readings. And then item number three is discussion only. It's an administrative regulation for the rules for use of school facilities. Anything? Mrs. Janisak?
I do. On 702.3, memorials?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure if maybe we should reword it, maybe? Maybe it's just me. The last section, the title of it is acceptable memorial gifts and practices.
But the list is things that are not acceptable.
And then it lists six things that are not acceptable.
Yes.
And I wonder if we should change the title? Or should we frame the six things positively? It just is a little confusing.
Yeah, that's the next reading. We'll have that for it.
All righty.
Thank you, Mrs. Janisak. I saw that.
Anytime.
Anything else? I believe so, yes.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hoppy.
You're welcome.
At this time, our last session for public comments, and still no. I love that. Thank you. Board comments, anybody?
I have one.
Yes, please.
I appreciate very much the Bethel Park salute to service wall, having two sons who served, one who served, one who is currently serving. I have already submitted my veteran's name. I'll be submitting my Army kiddo's name shortly as well. So, thank you for doing that. I think it's a wonderful way to honor Bethel Park graduates who are in the less than 1% who serve our country and who serve well. So, thank you very, very much for that, Mr. Valani.
And that's, to expand on that, that is something Mr. Hurd, who was an English teacher at the high school, created over 10, 15 years ago, and Mr. Valani's just expanded that to a little bit better, more, we used to just take pictures, you know, little Polaroid pictures, and now we're expanding something more presentable. So, thank you, Mr. Valani. So, any other board comments?
I do.
Yes.
Final pitch, February 1st, is bourbon, beans, and vino. Four to seven at the community center. It supports the Fantastic Four. So, last time I checked, there were less than 50 tickets left, so.
I guess I'll just say, I want to wish Mary Beth Gregg well leaving the district. I think sometimes people forget that all the stuff that shows up up here that we're looking at all the time, like, all these things come from someone who's providing them for us and helping Dr. Walsh with everything he does and the whole building, and she has for quite a while. So, she'll be missed, and welcome to Miss Katrufus, and look forward to working with her as well.
I just have one comment or a question, basically. We had a couple of rough decisions to make over these last few days with the weather. We've got a few emails. I know there's a lot of social media postings asking about what's taking on, how the decision-making process goes to these decisions, are delayed, no delayed, remote, not remote. So, I asked Dr. Walsh if he please just again explained to everybody what the process is and how the information gets out to the public after a decision is made, and then how Mr. Cromie then takes that information, then gets it forward to the community and so forth. So, Dr. Walsh, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure, Mr. Cromie. So, there primarily are options for the superintendent to consider. We have snow days, we have two-hour delays, and we have remote instruction days. There was a point not so long ago that we had flexible instruction days, which was a term generated by the Department of Education, Pennsylvania's Department of Education, and allowing schools that sort of remote instruction flexibility, but it also required us to have facilities like nursing services opened and available for kids that might need it or want it, food service, and other related services needed to be made available. So, in 2023, the legislature sort of changed Pennsylvania code, and that made FID days obsolete. While they're still in legal terms in existence, we don't use FID days anymore. We use remote days. There was some concern in social media that we were going to run out of FID days. Well, that would be true if we were using FID days. We don't use FID days. There was a limit of five. We don't have a limit because the new regulations from the legislature say you have to achieve 180 school days or 990 hours of instruction in your secondary schools. So, if you go with 180 days, we could have five hours a day, we could have four hours a day, we could have three hours a day, as long as you have 180 of them, which means remote days are now a viable option for instructional delivery as an alternative mode to achieve those hours. The process begins mostly in the decision-making process with Dr. Korzinski and I talking early in advance of weather issues using forecasting that we subscribe to, and we also consult with the municipality. At least, Dr. Korzinski talks with the road crews, the municipality, and his own crews, and their ability to have campuses and roads in and out of the community safe for bus travel, for staff travel, and so forth. As that's happening, I'm consulting with neighboring districts to see what their conditions are so that teachers who don't live in Bethel can make it to Bethel through those neighboring district streets. So, by 5:30 in the morning, we've had a decision made typically, and then communicate to Mr. Cromie, who then has to communicate this on all of the channels and avenues by which we communicate this message from parent square to television stations, to website postings, and social media. Thank you. That process takes some time to get all that done, and parent square takes time to get that message out, that you enter all the data and you hit go, and it doesn't just ring your phone. It takes some time for all the 4,000 calls to be made and the staff calls to be made, and so on and so forth. So, it could take as much as 20 minutes for all of that to be in your inbox or in your phone ringing for that information to happen. We hopefully wouldn't need to rethink decisions, but conditions do change, and so we'll keep watching how it's going. Dr. Korzinski keeps talking to his crews and the bus drivers, and if conditions are changing, we have to then make an alternative decision and communicate that as quickly as we can. Some of the times, you're based in on forecasts that turn out to be fairly inaccurate. So, by noon, you've got dry roads, and you could have had school when you went remote. And so, it's frustrating, and it does disappoint folks and inconvenience families. We recognize all that, but we're dealing with decisions in about a 30-minute window with information and data that we have at that time. I don't have the crystal ball to know exactly what it's going to look like at 9 o'clock or 1 o'clock or 4 o'clock, but we do our best.
So, if you don't mind, if anybody else has any questions in that?
My only question is, I know that there was some concerns about some of those that come in very early to the high school, meaning the swim team, the football team, those for conditioning purposes. By 5:30, as Mr. Cromie, if that's the timeline you're using, is communicating that, they're already here.
Yeah, there's not much we can do to make it any faster than that. There really isn't. I'm sorry that they're out and in the building at 5:30, because that's about as late as we can make the decision and still impact the bus routes and not have drivers showing up, clocking in, and getting paid for four hours if we're not going to have buses at schools that day.
Right. I mean, I was just.
We want to make it at that time so that we weren't using the most accurate dated information, but not so late after that that we impact staff.
Can I ask this question, then? Is it possible that Mr. Valani and Mrs. Grimm and all of them sit down and see for winter's purposes that we don't have kids in the building? Because then the kids are there, and we may be going remote that day.
How do you, if you're not saying it the night before, which I don't think that you usually can, and just after working in a school for this many years, I know that sometimes they call it, and the next day it's fine. So, I feel like you're calling it at the right time in the morning, and there's really no way, like he said, to prevent that unless you call it the night before. So, it's not like you can say, okay, we might call tomorrow, so we can't have any swimming. Is that what you're saying?
No, no. I'm asking them to work it out with timing.
Morning.
So, the mornings, when there could be an anticipated situation, push the time back or work with the coaches to push the time back.
Like, football will have, we're on that 5:30, 6 o'clock.
Football has to be up right now. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, at 5:00. Okay.
God bless them for getting up that early and lifting.
I know. That was, you know, my other thing, too. Then they're, you know, so.
One of the things we have to contend with is, on more than one occasion this month, snow fell at like 6:30. Very inconvenient. It's called greasy snow. It makes travel very challenging. So, we kind of know when the snow is coming, but we can't predict exactly when it's going to come. And working with the athletic partners and those that are using our buildings in the morning, we would ask that they also look at the forecast and kind of make a decision for the safety of the program.
I guess that's what I'm asking, if Mr. Valani could work on that. This has nothing to do with the administration and how they make their call. It has more to do with the timing of other activities going on.
And even on our website, you know, we have school cancellation. There is a paragraph about, a parent still also has the right, if they feel for the safety of their own child based on their street, because it takes us all crew two-and-a-half hours just to do their one section. And I've seen that, and we all have, where it comes in at 6:30, quarter to 7:00, the snow hits, you know, and we have a mess. But so, again, just as a reminder, our parents, if you think your neighborhood's not safe at that time, you have the right to withhold your child, call your, I would imagine, call your school's principal and saying, hey, due to weather conditions, we couldn't come in today. It's an excuse absentee.
It is. Correct.
You know? And the other thing, it was interesting, too, is we went through just today. I know there are some districts that made notification on Sunday, because Monday was a day off with a holiday. Some districts had delay today, two-hour delay. Walking, I believe, in the Mount Lebanon still had school today on a two-hour delay, correct? You know, and they're out walking, you know, granted, I don't know what their furthest walk is, but, you know, if you're coming from Abbeyville, you've got to walk. All right? And here, we went to remote at last minute because the weather changed. We are tomorrow, correct, and notifications may not. We are fully remote tomorrow.
Correct.
And then we'll evaluate tomorrow for Thursday, as we're looking at the weather situation as it goes Thursday. But just, I wanted to remind everybody that, you know, it's a tough decision. Road conditions change, and then the temperature-wise, we had three districts that had different views, all neighbors. We went remote, St. Clair and Levo went two-hour delay, so Canamac, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's kind of hard to make that call. There's no fast, steady fast rule saying this.
Well, we tried to have at least a rule of thumb, and we have used as our rule of thumb that if the thermometer is below zero, regardless of windshield, then we would need to delay or close so that the temperature would be above that threshold. And so, there, yes, I agree that, you know, some of the comments that we heard was that what a fine line difference there is between 7 o'clock and 8 o'clock, or 8 o'clock and 10 o'clock, when it's just two degrees. Yeah, it is a very distinct difference. You probably wouldn't even notice that kind of difference temperature-wise, but it does cross over that threshold that we try and set for ourselves, that's the benchmark we were using to make decisions about whether it's safe to be outside or not, is that zero-degree line. When this morning, somebody, the line was, we were below the line. We were below the line at 5:15 a.m., 5:30 a.m. It was negative one below the line. It was not predicted to be there, but it was.
Correct.
So, we made the switch.
Yes, Mrs. Janisak?
I just wanted to share, too. Thank you for making those calls, Dr. Walsh. All the years I've hung out in and around school boards and administrators, I never met one person ever who said they would prefer to be the person to make those calls. So, thank you for doing that. It's a job no one wants. I also, you know, it's winter in Pittsburgh, and I think some things I would hope families could keep in mind. Bethel Park is a very large community, and we're very narrow, and I live on one end of it. And in December, there was a call, I don't remember what it was, and where I lived, it was a blizzard when my student was supposed to be getting on a bus going down a very steep hill. And on the other end of town, people thought that was the craziest decision they'd ever heard, because they hardly had any snow at all. It's a big place, and we're responsible for all the students in all the places. And I don't know, it's one of those calls that no one's ever happy, and for every decision someone's unhappy with, there is somebody else who's happy for it and would not prefer the opposite. So, I would encourage us all to be kind with one another and with our administrators, and all of us work together in recognition that it's a very cold winter in Pittsburgh, and no one wants anyone to be hurt or to freeze or to have trouble connecting or any of the other things. And if we could all magically twinkle our noses and get every single child safe to school every single day, that is exactly what we would do. So, bear with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, thank you to those staff. I've done that. I had to go out and check roads at 4:30 in the morning. I know that's a thrill, so I know those folks are involved doing that. So, thank you for getting out and putting that effort in there to make sure our schools stay safe. So, thank you, guys.
I want to recognize also the Borough and Suzie. You know, 3:30 in the morning, 4 o'clock, we're on the phone, talking, we're passing each other, and our roads, our road crew from the municipality is pretty darn good. And I just want to, you know, recognize our guys here at the district. They're here early, trying to move solid water, and it's not easy. So, kudos to them.
Again, thank you.
And no other comments? All right. That being said, I think our meeting's over then. Thank you, Mr. Pishaneri. I have a motion. I hate that part. Yeah. Yeah, it works, because we're ending. No one's going to say, no, I vote nay, I want to stay longer. Lee, he wants to stay longer. He's going. He's got another I coming up here, yeah. Darren wants to stay, right? You voted to stay.